Good afternoon and welcome to the Committee on Rules, Privileges and Elections. At this time, we ask that you please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Good afternoon and welcome to the meeting of the Committee on Rules, Privileges and Elections. I'm Councilmember Keith Powers, Chair of the Committee. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce the other members of the Committee who are present. We're joined by Speaker Adrian Adams, Councilmember Rosalina Brooks-Powers, Councilmember Ayala, Councilmember Farias, Councilmember Brennan, and I am sure we will be joined by others in the near future. I'd also like to acknowledge the council to the Committee, Jeff Campania, and the Committee staff that worked on the appointments. We're here today. Chief Ethics, Council Pearl Moore; Director Investigations, Francesca Delavecchia; Deputy Director Investigations, Alicia Vassell. By letters dated January 31st, 2024, Mayor Eric Adams requested the advice and consent of the council regarding the appointments of Milton Williams and Amy Millard to the New York City Conflicts of Interest Board. Today, the council will consider whether to give these candidates our advice and consent. Before I move over, I want to recognize Speaker Adrian. We're also joined by Councilmember Joe Borelli as well. I want to now recognize Speaker Adrian Adams to offer opening remarks.
Thank you so much, Chair Powers. And I also do recognize and acknowledge my colleagues on the Committee, and I want to thank the staff for their hard work on today's hearing. Today, the Committee will be hearing from two nominees to the Conflicts of Interest Board, Amy Millard and Milton Williams. I welcome the candidates who've joined us here today and congratulate you on your nominations. Amy Millard is of counsel with the firm Kleiman Rosenberg Kirchner &amp; Linder, where she has spent the last 24 years focusing on white-collar criminal defense, on matters that have involved allegations of banking and other financial fraud, securities fraud, market manipulation, improprieties in the sale of various securities, including municipal securities, mortgage-backed securities and derivative products, mail and wire fraud, False Claims Act violation, criminal antitrust violations, false statements, obstruction of justice, failure to maintain appropriate anti-money laundering systems, violations of the Foreign Corrupt Practices Act, OFAC violations, healthcare fraud, and criminal tax matters, including cross-border tax investigations. She also spent nine years in the United States Attorney's Office prosecuting securities fraud, financial fraud, tax fraud, money laundering, and other financial crimes. Since 2022, Milton Williams has served as the Chair of the Conflicts of Interest Board. He is also a partner at Walden Mockdon-Harren, where he specializes in white-collar criminal defense work. He has also served as Deputy General Counsel and Chief Compliance Officer at Time Incorporated as a prosecutor in the Manhattan District Attorney's Office and in the Securities and Commodities Fraud Unit of the United States Attorney's Office. And in 2013, he was appointed to co-chair the Moreland Commission to Investigate Public Corruption. I look forward to hearing from each of you about what you will bring to your roles and how you hope to promote the public's trust in government and the work of COIB in particular. Thank you so much for being with us today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I also want to congratulate you both on your nomination, renomination. So background, the Conflict of Interest Board is the entity that serves to provide clear guidance to public employees regarding the conflict of interest laws codified in Chapter 68 of the New York City Charter. The Board is tasked with achieving this goal through training, education, and the issuance and publication of advisory opinions relating to conduct that may violate the city's conflicts of interest law. The Board also adopts rules to implement and interpret the provisions of the conflicts of interest laws. It reviews and makes decisions on alleged conflict violations and has the power to impose penalties, including fines up to $25,000 per violation, suspension, or dismissal of city employees when deemed appropriate. The Board also collects and reviews financial disclosure reports. The Board consists of five members who are appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council. The mayor must also designate one of these members as Chair of the Board. The Charter states that these members should be chosen for their independence, integrity, civic commitment, and high ethical standards. Board members serve for staggered six-year terms and are prohibited from serving more than two consecutive six-year terms. Board members are required to meet at least once per month and are prohibited from holding public office, seeking election to any public office, being a public employee in any jurisdiction, holding political party office, or appearing as a lobbyist before the city. Board members are entitled to receive compensation in the amount of $250 for each calendar day they perform work for the Board. The Chair is entitled to receive $275 per day of service. Today, we are joined by Milton Williams, who has been nominated by the mayor for appointment to the, reappointment to the Conflicts of Interest Board. If the council grants its advice and consent, he will be appointed to serve a six-year term beginning on April 1st, 2024 and expiring on March 31st, 2030. Mr. Williams was first appointed to the Conflicts of Interest Board in 2022 for the remainder of his term that will expire on March 31st, 2024. Upon his reappointment in 2022, Mayor Adams designated him as a Chair. We're also joined by Amy Millard, who has been nominated by the mayor for appointment to the Conflicts of Interest Board to serve a six-year term beginning April 1st, 2024 and expiring March 31st, 2030. I want to welcome you both. Thank you for being here today. I also want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember Rosalamaanka. If you can raise your right hands to be sworn in, we will swear you in, and then we will head over to your opening statements.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Committee and in answer to all Councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you. We are going to now hear your opening statements. We will first start with Ms. Millard, and then we will head over to Mr. Williams, and then after that, we'll head to questions. Thanks.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Chair Powers, Speaker Adams, and distinguished members of the Committee on Rules, Privileges and Elections. It is an honor to be here today, and I thank you for the opportunity to appear before you. The Conflicts of Interest Board is critically important because it promotes public trust in city government. I want to serve because it will give me the opportunity to use my experience and the skills I developed in the criminal justice system, both as a government lawyer and in private practice, to ensure that public servants adhere to ethical standards and guidelines. The guidelines established and maintained by the Board are critical in ensuring that city government is fair, and equally important, that it is perceived as fair. I grew up in a small town in Nassau County where I attended public school. My parents were of the generation who, following World War II, returned to civilian life, started families, and ventured out of New York City to the nearby suburbs. I was the first one in my family to go to college, and I left New York at age 17 to attend a small liberal arts college just outside of Chicago. After two years, missing both the diversity of New York and my family, I transferred to Barnard College of Columbia University, and I never left New York again. I've lived in the city for 52 years. After graduating from Barnard and then getting a master's degree in history at NYU, I spent some time teaching college students at Bronx Community College to improve their literacy, and then worked at a nonprofit, United Jewish Appeal. In 1980, I returned to school, getting my law degree from NYU in 1983. I was privileged to attain a two-year clerkship with a federal judge in Manhattan, the Honorable Whitman Knapp, who, before being appointed to the bench, served as Chair of the Knapp Commission on Police Corruption. My early training as a lawyer came from Judge Knapp. It was from him that I first learned the importance of respectful listening, careful and critical analysis of facts, understanding the law, applying the law to facts, and exercising judgment. I observed how our system of justice worked best when both the government and the defense were represented by experienced, competent attorneys of integrity. It was my experience during the clerkship, seeing dozens of lawyers appear before the judge in both civil and criminal matters, that led me to choose a career in the criminal justice system, choosing to deal with issues related to life and liberty rather than monetary damages. I served as a federal prosecutor in the Southern District of New York for nine years. Although there were guidelines as to which cases must be brought, I was given wide discretion when the circumstances warranted, as to both charging decisions and recommendations concerning sentencing to the probation department, whose advice judges often took into account. I mentored new Assistant United States Attorneys in learning analytical skills and applying judgment and discretion to the matters they handled. And I was on the hiring committee, making decisions about who, among the extremely talented and qualified applicants, had the experience and judgment to join the U.S. Attorney's Office. After serving nine years as an Assistant United States Attorney, I moved on, starting my own law practice, and shortly thereafter, accepted an offer to join a small law firm as a partner. My areas of focus were largely financial regulations, tax, and bribery. When I became a criminal defense lawyer, I utilized the same skills I had honed as a federal prosecutor: careful listening, careful analysis of facts, presenting those facts to the government, and encouraging them to use their discretion wisely. I was proud to continue with a role in the criminal justice system. During my time in private practice, I continued to serve the public. I served on the New York City Bar Association's Criminal Law Committee, which addresses criminal justice policy issues, and also served on the Judiciary Committee, which evaluates the fitness of candidates for judicial office. I also served in leadership positions in professional associations. I helped found and chair the New York chapter of the Women's White Collar Defense Association and served on its executive board. The WWCPDA is a national and international association dedicated to mentoring women in the field and encouraging diversity in the practice of white-collar criminal defense. I have also been involved in charitable work for decades, serving in leadership positions at United Jewish Appeal Federation of New York. Throughout my practice, I have taught and spoken on ethics and conflicts of interest rules, both to law students in workshop workshops at Harvard Law School and Cardozo Law School, and to attorneys on professional panels at the New York City Bar Association. In my own practice, both as a prosecutor and as a defense lawyer, I have always been keenly aware of recognizing and evaluating conflicts issues, often consulting with conflicts experts, both when I was at the U.S. Attorney's Office and in private practice. Distinguished Councilmembers, I believe that my years of experience as an attorney, both in private practice and with the federal government, my civic and charitable work, and my experience speaking on, teaching, and evaluating conflicts issues qualify me to sit on the Conflicts of Interest Board. I would welcome the opportunity to do so. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Now hear a testimony from Mr. Williams, and then we'll go to questions.
For the last year and five months, it has been my privilege to serve as the Chair. I am a product of New York City. I grew up in four of the five boroughs. I was born and lived over by Taff High School and College Avenue, then moved to Queens, Rochdale Village, and then for a while, and then came back to the Bronx, where I lived most of the time when we came back, right by the courthouse, Walton Avenue, Grand Concourse area, Joyce Kilmer Park, where the old Yankee Stadium was. And then moved to, oddly enough, the south shore of Staten Island, and lived in Arden Heights, and then went to high school in Staten Island and graduated from Monsignor Farrell High School. So I've been all over the place, and very familiar with the city and its different constituencies. The idea that public service is a public trust has guided my professional career. I've served as an Assistant U.S. Attorney in the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Southern District of New York, where I had the privilege of working with Amy Millard and actually worked a couple of cases together. I also worked as an Assistant District Attorney in the Manhattan District Attorney's Office, as co-chair of the Moreland Commission to Investigate Public Corruption, as a member of the Cardinals Review Board of Allegations of Improper Relations Between Clergy and Miners, and as a member of various attorney grievance committees, both at the federal and the state level. I have consistently worked to ensure that people with authority in our society act with integrity, and serving as the Chair of the Conflicts of Interest Board has afforded me a unique opportunity to continue to do so. The Conflict of Interest Board is a tiny city agency that serves a big purpose: protecting the public's trust in government. That public trust is the lifeblood of everything our city does, because government depends on the hard-earned faith that public servants at every level of government are doing their work in the interest of the city and its residents rather than in their own private interests. No group of public servants are more devoted to serving this mission than my hard-working fellow Board members and the agency's dedicated staff. Under the city charter, the Board is charged with four main responsibilities: training, advice, annual disclosure, and enforcement. These responsibilities reflect both the organizational structure of our office and the pillars of our endeavor to keep conflicts of interest out of city government by teaching public servants about conflicts of interest law, giving practical legal guidance about complying with the Conflicts of Interest Board, providing transparency about the financial holdings of high-level public servants, and enforcing the law fairly and equitably when it has been violated. I believe the Conflicts of Interest Board has continued to successfully accomplish these four main and important responsibilities during my relatively brief time as Chair. I very much hope to be confirmed for a full six-year term so that I can continue to serve the mission of the Critical Conflicts of Interest Board and the city that I love.
Thank you. If you went to St. Joe's by the Sea, you would have been, went to the same school as Joe Borelli. I'm sorry to tell you that. He's not a feral guy.
Changing my opinion on what I told you earlier about how lovely.
We're now going to head into questions. We're going to start with the Speaker, and then myself, and we'll open up to members as well. We'll start with Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you so much once again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Williams, it's good to see you back.
Thank you.
I'll start my questions for you. Charter Section 2603 requires the Board to consult with the mayor before it assesses penalties if the violating public servant is the head of an agency. Does this requirement prevent COIB from assessing penalties against the mayor without his consent?
So, based on my experience as Board Chair, the consultation requirement of Charter Section 2603H has not impacted the Board's independence, even with regard to the mayor himself. The vast majority of Board enforcement actions are resolved by settlement, where the consultation requirement of Charter 2603H3 does not really come into play. In a small minority of cases where a hearing is held, after which the Board has found a violation of the conflicts of interest law, the consultation requirement does not impact the Board's ability to be independent and autonomous. The Charter only requires the Board to consult with the agency served by the public servant, but gives the power to the Board to act independently regardless of any agency consideration.
Okay. How do you ensure COIB's independence from the mayor?
By evaluating, by holding everybody who comes before COIB to the same high standard, evaluating it carefully, and not treating anyone differently.
Okay.
No matter what their position is.
Okay. Recently, the mayor's brother resigned from his position as head of the mayor's security detail. It's been reported that COIB required the mayor to pay his brother $1 per year instead of the $210,000 salary associated with the position, and I've got some questions for you along those lines as well, about your opinion as an ethics expert about these types of arrangements in government. So, in your, in your opinion, Mr. Williams, as an ethics expert, should COIB analyze the family member's financial status to evaluate the risk of the family member accepting other compensation prohibited under Chapter 68?
Well, everything should be evaluated. I must say, and I don't mean to be the least bit reticent in answering or reluctant to answer your questions, I have to be careful because of the confidentiality requirement within COIB. I also have to be careful about giving opinions. So, when we reach a conclusion at COIB, it is a collaborative and consensus-building exercise amongst all five members of the Board. So, when that happens, we kind of talk, discuss, go back and forth on what the issues are, and then with the, with guidance from the staff, who's excellent, we reach a conclusion. Now, I don't, I don't know that I'm at liberty to discuss that particular case, and quite frankly, I don't necessarily remember all the facts and details of it. But I can tell you, in the process of going through the deliberations and evaluating, we have all the information on any case at our disposal, and we kind of work through the issues.
Okay. So, we'll move away from the specificity of that, and we'll just speak in general terms. In your opinion, or let's say, in keeping with the spirit of Chapter 68 for high-level public servants, to be able to directly hire family members for positions of influence so long as they are able to forego salaries? And if so, doesn't this no-salary accommodation benefit people who are independently wealthy or over people who have to work for a living?
So, it would depend. I would have to hear a specific case. I'm very leery or wary about giving, by forming an opinion without having all the facts in front of me of a specific case. I will say this: my experience on the Board is that no one is given preferential treatment. No one. And we, as a Board, I can say this as a general matter, bend over backwards to make sure, A, that doesn't happen, and nor could it be perceived that way.
That's good to hear. Let's talk about something, something else. Recently, the FBI actually arrested a large number of mid-level managers at NYCHA for allegedly taking bribes in connection with the issuance of contracts. When law enforcement arrests and charges public servants for alleged crimes that may fall within a category of activity prohibited by Chapter 68, to what extent does COIB have to defer to law enforcement, and to what extent is COIB able to conduct its own independent investigation?
So, my understanding of how the process works is the criminal investigation is, will run it, will go along and proceed on its own separate track, and if something comes to us, we will evaluate it and make our own judgments based on the evidence that we have.
Okay. In looking at your responses to pre-hearing questions, you informed us that budget cuts have resulted in a 12% reduction in COIB's headcount, and this impacts how the agency does perform its work. How has the headcount reduction impacted COIB?
Well, the more staff that we have, I mean, the staff works very hard, it's very diligent, and we really, as a Board, are blessed. We have all the information at our disposal and carefully evaluated, you know, case studies so that we really are well-informed. And if there's something we don't, we don't have that we feel we need, the staff is always willing to go back and get it. Obviously, if we had more staff, we could do even more. There's certain limitations, and, you know, cutting the staff of COIB, this, without the cuts, the staff was already working very, very hard. And so, with the cuts, they might be a little bit overburdened, but I've heard no complaints so far.
That's a good thing. Has the budget been restored in the mayor's preliminary budget proposal at all?
I'm unaware.
Okay. Going back to your pre-hearing questions, you wrote that in spite of a 12% loss of staff due to budget cuts, including the loss of a trainer, quote, "COIB is in good condition." How many remaining full-time trainers do you have on staff to train the 300,000 city employees on how to avoid violating Chapter 68?
I think we have a handful. I'm not, I don't know the specifics. And I know that what COIB is very adept at doing is people will pitch in when needed.
That's great to hear, too. Half of COIB's mission is to train city employees on compliance with Chapter 68, and you stated in your responses to our written questions that the most effective tool to introducing COIB to city employees is its training program. How can we justify the assertion that COIB is in good condition when such a significant portion of its mission-critical work is understaffed?
Well, it's understaffed, but that really is a tribute to how hard the staff at COIB works, and they do work very hard.
I believe you. I get the emails. When you come before the council next month during our critical budget hearings, you're going to request an increase in funding, we're sure of that, to restore your headcount. Do you have any idea how much of an increase you're going to be looking for then?
At this particular time, I'm, it's still being discussed, and I need to discuss and defer to the Executive Director and General Counsel of COIB in kind of helping me to assess what is needed. And obviously, when I come before the council, I'll have good justifications for what is asked for.
Okay. I thank you very much. I'm going to defer back to the Chair.
Thank you. Just a few questions, and I'm going to hand over to my colleagues here as well. I just want to follow up. I understand you can't speak about specific instances, but I wanted to understand just the application of Chapter 68 that has spanned a few administrations here, when we talk about specific instances around family members and compensation. Could you just explain to us what you believe are the laws surrounding the ability to hire a family member, and what prohibitions exist?
So, my understanding is they can be, it has to, the Board has to evaluate whether or not, A, there could be an actual conflict of interest. And this is more of a summary, 50,000th review in terms of my approach it, whether or not there is or could be an actual conflict of interest. Any other piece to it, in terms of the perception of the independence and autonomy of the Board, is whether or not it could be perceived as a conflict of interest. And that's how I personally would approach the facts and circumstances when they are presented to me.
So, the factual application of whether there's a conflict and the perception as well, is that correct to say?
I'm saying, me, as personally, I would look at the perception, because sometimes perception becomes very important. Now, look, sometimes there's a divergence between whether or not there's an actual conflict and whether or not there's a perception of it. And if there's no actual conflict, then that's, in my opinion, what should, unless, you know, that's, in my opinion, what should control. But I am sensitive to the perception, okay?
Okay, I understand. And what would be, what would constitute a conflict, then, in this sense?
If someone is receiving a position because of a particular, like, I'm just saying in general, okay? If, A, they're not really qualified for the position, and B, they're being placed there, maybe they're given advantage to somebody.
Okay. And does financial compensation have anything to do with that equation, whether you are compensated or not?
It could. We have to look at a myriad of factors, but it absolutely could.
Okay. Are there examples in recent memory where a family member has been denied a position?
I don't, not that I recall.
Or, I'm sorry, where COIB has stated that it's a conflict to hire a family member even for minimal compensation?
So, A, not that I recall, and B, again, I have to be careful about discussing specific cases.
I'm not asking you to speak of specific cases, although there would, well, I understand your point, but I think there would be certainly, the beginning part of your answer seemed satisfactory, which is not in your understanding. Okay. I think that's, putting aside the specific examples the Speaker was talking about, I think that's also what we're trying to understand here sometimes, is the, how the application of the law and what the spirit of the law says relative to that hiring of a family member, because we've seen it happen in other administrations as well. It's not just about one situation in the current moment, so I think you have something else to add to that.
Yeah. Rest assured that each circumstance is evaluated carefully. I don't want to say that there's heightened scrutiny to particular circumstances over others. There is a high standard for everyone, and the Board is very diligent about evaluating each set of facts.
Well, I might want there to be higher scrutiny. I might, we might. I might, we might want there to be higher scrutiny in the case of a family member being hired.
Well, I would assert that the standards that the board employs in terms of evaluating these facts and circumstances are high enough that you could say everything's under heightened scrutiny.
Okay, that's a good answer. We'll, I also want to recognize we'll be joined by Councilmember Hudson here as well. I wanted to move to, we talked about the budget cuts and, I think, budget, I wanted to ask a question. You are an accomplished attorney, and certainly, I think, sensitive to this issue, which is, in a question in our pre-hearing, questions that we submitted, that you submitted, or your responses you submitted, we had asked whether city employees under investigation should be provided counsel, I'm saying, underlying the should be provided counsel. I think the answer, I think you had said basically that to current practice, many will receive representation through a labor union. I want to re-ask that question with the spirit of the question in mind, or the factual question in mind, which is, should a city employee be provided representation when they are in investigation, and have your opinion?
So, it's, there, I mean, it's, when you say, should they be provided, COIB is not in charge of providing anyone counsel, so it's really up to the individuals.
Sure, but where, the question is, in your opinion, your experience as Chair of COIB, seeing individuals come before you and coming before the agency, do you believe there should be a policy of providing representation to somebody to make sure that they are able to navigate that process?
Well, so I don't want to get out of my skis without having the ability to consult with my other board members, okay? That would be important here, because we run, we really consensus building and collaborative. I will say this, so I don't skirt your-
Personal opinion.
-skirt your question. I think in a lot of instances that I've seen, both in civil and criminal circumstances, with employment situations in big companies, that if an individual is able to have a counsel just as a sounding board and to be there to represent him, it could be helpful, yes.
I would think it would be helpful.
It could be if the attorney is good.
That's a fair comment. Spoken like an attorney. I'm going to move over to some colleagues to ask questions and make some comments. I may come back and have a couple of questions for you. We first have Councilmember Borelli.
Yeah, just a statement to you, Mr. Williams. I just want to point out and say on the record that many of us on the council appreciate the work that you guys do. All of us are elected because we are entangled in our communities with friends and local business owners and family members, all of whom have, you know, whether it's a permit or a contract, some dealing with the city, and we all have our own investments in life. Your folks have been such a great sounding board, and I thought I was the only one bothering them, but then over the last 10 years in the council, it turns out, a lot of my colleagues have gone to them and asked for advice and have received very clear advice on what you could do, what you can't do. Almost all of us are here for the right reasons, and it is appreciated that we have, we get very quick and clear answers on things, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And the credit, I'll just say, goes to, a lot of the credit, most of the credit goes to Carol and Ethan and their staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Borelli, getting extra points with the Conference of Interest Board today. Before I move over to, oh, well, to other colleagues, I just wanted to ask a follow-up question, and this is for you as the current Chair. What is the guidance given to staff there? And I don't, I disagree, I agree that, I think, every example I've had has been extremely helpful, extremely informative when we have questions to that, and I think that's extremely important, especially for city employees who may be going through a difficult, complicated question and trying to seek advice. But what is the advice given when it comes to members? Certainly, I'll give you an example. What if a city employee comes to you, an employee, and raises a question to you that could impact, put them into violation by the nature of you and asking the question? Does that trigger any sort of process that might penalize them for that? Or what is the advice given to folks when they are seeking advice from the Conference of Interest Board?
So, my understanding is to be, and my edict is to be fair. So if someone's coming to ask a question, they should be treated fairly, they should be given the pros and cons, and given objective advice on how they should proceed.
And is there any instance where that is forwarded then on to a process that could be punitive for them?
Not that I'm aware, not that I'm aware, and not that I would, not that I would be endorsed, okay? I think the idea of having an advice line is to help people avoid that situation. We don't want a situation where, and for lack of a better phrase, I don't have a legalistic phrase for it, we don't want to play a game of gachan, okay?
Okay, thank you. I think Councilmember Brooks-Powers, did she leave? I think she left. She had a question, but I think it was asked by the speaker around budget cuts, and had asked me to say thank you for your time discussing your credentials. We're going to keep moving on. We have Councilmember Farias, followed by Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning or afternoon at this point, I think. It's a wonderful day. So just a couple of quick questions, and I have questions for the both of you, but I'll start with you, Mr. Williams. How does recommending a minimal salary reduce or eliminate the perception of a conflict of interest between a supervisor who has a reporting relationship with someone associated with the supervisor?
It may or may not, depending on the specific facts. I gotta, and again, I don't mean to be avoid or circumvent your question-
We're just trying to find different ways to ask the question.
Well, no, it's fine. I just have to be careful, because what I don't want to do is, we have so many cases that come in and so much that we evaluate, even in the year and five months I've been there, that I don't want to make any statements here that would seemingly contradict something that the board might do, depending on what facts come in, because it could be different. Everything is very fact-specific and fact-sensitive. Look, I guess the perception is that there's no, you know, there's no salary, then, you know, it may minimize or reduce the possibility of a conflict of interest, but not necessarily, okay? Depends on all the facts.
Okay, thank you so much. And then, when COIB receives reports that the FBI or other law enforcement organization is investigating activity that could fall into the category of activity prohibited by Chapter 68, how does COIB decide whether to request DOI, initiate its own investigation?
Well, so, if, have there been a specific complaint that came to COIB? I don't, my understanding, and again, I would defer to the staff and to the executive director, but I don't know that we, in some cases, we might or might not pick, I don't, I'm unaware of anything that has come in as a result of a media report, okay? And I'd be very, personally, okay, wary about opening, necessarily opening an investigation based on a media report, okay? I think normally, the way it works, we have more, and there's specifics that are given to COIB before they, before they, you know, open an investigation.
Okay, thank you. And, hi, Ms. Millard.
Hello.
So you've spent the last 27 years as a white-collar criminal defense lawyer, defending individuals accused of financial fraud, securities fraud, market manipulation, mail and wire fraud, making false statements, and obstruction of justice. Why do you now want to sit on a board that punishes people for misuse of position?
The reason that I want to sit on this board is because this board is an incredibly important public service. It's important because it promotes public trust in city government. It's important because it ensures that public servants adhere to high ethical standards. It's important because the boards, the guidelines and standards that the board maintains ensure that city government is fair, and that it's perceived as fair, which is equally important. I've always been involved in public service. I've been in public, involved in public service throughout my entire career, and this is, seems to me like an incredible, incredibly important opportunity to continue that in a significant way.
Thank you so much. And what experience do you have providing ethics trainings and educating ethical issue that you believe has prepared you for this role?
Sure. Thank you for that question. Well, I've had, I've taught, I've taught ethics for decades. I've taught ethics and conflicts issues at Harvard Law School, the Trial Advocacy Workshop at Cardozo Law School, the Intensive Trial Advocacy Program. I've taught an annual program at the New York City Bar Association, specifically on ethics and conflicts, identifying ethics and addressing ethics and conflicts issues. And frankly, in my own practice, both as a prosecutor and as a defense lawyer, I've spent my entire career identifying conflicts issues, addressing them, seeking advice on them, and going to experts when necessary.
Thank you for that response. And though you would be new to the Conflicts of Interest Board, you have extensive experience with the penal system. Based on your experience with, COIB benefit from having an explicit model for assessing fines for violations, and if so, what would be the advantages or disadvantages of having such a model or guidelines?
Sure. My understanding is that COIB takes into account a holistic, COIB has a holistic approach to taking into account fines and penalties. Guidelines, I have found, from my experience as an attorney, are helpful in providing a model. Within the criminal justice system, there are federal sentencing guidelines. At first, they were mandatory. Over the years, the criminal justice system found that mandatory guidelines don't actually always ensure fair sentencing. And so I think that guidelines are always helpful. They enable people deciding penalties to know ranges of what is considered to be similar penalties for similar conduct. And so I actually do think that it could be useful, as long as they are guidelines.
I appreciate that response. I'm done for questions now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll go to Councilwoman Hudson.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon. I would like to be associated with the remarks of Councilmember Borelli. I think COIB is an amazing resource, and I think more people should be calling and asking questions before getting into whatever it is they're doing. But wanted to ask Mr. Williams, only because you've, this is a reappointment for you, and so we don't have exactly the same questions that we do have for Ms. Millard, and I'm just curious to know, I don't think that this necessarily clouds one's judgment, and I don't think that it would preclude, certainly, support. I think both of you seem like excellent candidates. But I'm just curious to know, have you ever donated to the mayor's campaign?
So I hope he's not mad at me, but no.
Okay, thank you. That's all for my question.
Thank you. We have a question from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Just to follow up, Ms. Millard, much along the same lines as what the Chair asked Mr. Williams regarding provision of counsel. In your written answers to a pre-hearing, written question asking whether city employees should be provided counsel, you answered that you thought doing so would benefit the process. Can you explain why?
Sure. In my experience, both as a federal prosecutor and as a defense lawyer, but especially as a federal prosecutor, I found that the system worked best when both sides had competent counsel of integrity. As a prosecutor, I found that if, that in order to have the system be fair, you needed someone on the other side. There is always, there's the risk, not with me, but there was a risk with some, that a prosecutor actually take advantage of a pro se defendant. And I found that the system is designed to work when it's fairly equal on both sides, when people have equal skills. And that's why I actually think it benefits the system.
I would agree with you 1,000%. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to ask a few more questions before we go on. Can, Ms. Millard, can you just talk a little bit, you mentioned being a federal prosecutor, you mentioned also being, working in defense, and can you talk about just a little more your desire and interest to be part of this process, using that experience, and what you think the benefits of that experience on both sides lends itself towards a specific position?
Sure, thank you. Both as, starting with the judge, my clerkship with the judge, as a prosecutor and as a defense lawyer, I spent decades learning certain skills, which I think are skills that would be beneficial to have as a board member. One of the most important was having an open mind, listening carefully, doing a critical analysis of facts, understanding the law, applying the law to the facts, and equally important, using judgment and discretion. One of the things that I did at the U.S. Attorney's Office was I mentored less experienced prosecutors. And one of the things that I did with them was want to help them understand the system to help them with cases, but I think the most important thing that I did with them was to try and bring them along and teach them about using judgment and discretion. And so I think all of those things, a critical analysis of all the facts and all the circumstances, and applying judgment are what I would bring.
Okay, thank you. And we're talking, obviously, about the part where folks are potentially being penalized or going to receive a punishment for something that happened. Obviously, the other side of the equation is making sure folks, you know, preventing that from happening, which is also a function of your agency. In your research and getting prepared for this hearing, is there anything that you see at the agency today, and this isn't a criticism of your colleague, I hope you know, and I know he won't take it this way, but any way that you see that the agency can be improving the preventative function, whether it's education, training, other measures or tools, or in your experience? In your past experience, you've seen ways to make sure that hundreds of thousands of city employees that are impacted by this, by you as this agency, if you are appointed, are not getting to that point in time, understand clearly the law, are trained in it, trained in best practices, know exactly how to reach out to the Conference of Interest Board, have the confidence to reach out to the Conference of Interest Board if needed, things like that, where we might want to make enhancements or improvements to those, those pre-penalty parts of the job?
Sure. Well, I agree with you 100% that education and training and publicity about conflicts, publicity about education and training are critical, absolutely critical. There's no substitute for actual experience, and so if I am confirmed, it will be my first experience with the board, and so I am not, I would be hesitant to make suggestions for changes and improvements to something that I do not yet have firsthand experience with. I have experience with training and with education, and I would look forward to making suggestions and sharing ideas once I have real-time experience with the board.
Okay. I just want to go back to Mr. Williams for a second, but you're both free to answer this question. In your, in your experience here, are there areas where Conference of Interest Board does not have power, duty, or responsibility that you would like to see it have?
Not that I've seen yet.
Okay. Any suggestions on that front, Ms. Millard?
I don't have it this time.
To be determined.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Okay. Thank you. First of all, congratulations both to you on your nomination, renomination. You should feel honored by that and highly qualified to be sitting here. Seeing no other questions, you guys are allowed to go, and we'll head over to the public test. We'll head over to the public testimony.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
We will now open up the floor to the public for, yes, for comments. If you wish to speak, you can fill out an appearance card with a sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. We ask that you please limit your comments to two minutes. If you have a written statement, please provide a copy of that statement to the sergeants-at-arms. We have one card that has been submitted, is Christopher Leon Johnson. You may appear. You have two minutes on topic.
Go. Hey, hello, Speaker. Hello, Mr. Powers, Chair. First of all, Keith, thank you for showing up on Sat, me, Saturday to the St. Bytus Bar. I hope that, you know, we push, keep on, yeah, you showed the whole St. Bytus Bar. I know, I know more topics, I write that. But thank you. But I'm going to say about the appointments, I'm kind of bored, so I'm going to just come and see what it's about. Appoint those two, please. Appoint the new person that's, that's the lady that was here recently. Please appoint those two. I love these speeches. I love how they answer every question. I loved how he answered, the guy that's already here, Mr. Williams, already pointed, he answered his questions, how she answered her questions. So, I believe that those appointments are, should we go through easily? You show a vote yes for it? It should be a no-brainer. One thing I just wanted to say is that what we, the COIB needs to bring back their Twitter account. I know you're the Speaker. I don't know what your control with social media, like, they lost their Twitter account. They delete their Twitter. I don't know why they did that. You know, George Nixon, Twitter, so, all right, so, all right, got that away. But that's all I got to say. I got to go, but thank you, everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. We are adjourned.